Okay, um, it is four oh two and we'll go ahead and call the regular meeting of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission to order. Um, first, if we get started, um, let's see, I, can you tell me who is in the chambers in terms of commissioners?
All of them, except for yourself.
Okay, um, so everybody-
We have a full attendance.
We don't have anyone asking. Okay, perfect. Um, first item on the agenda then is approval of this afternoon's agenda. Any discussion? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Charles, motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Um, next item on the agenda, we will have approval of minutes of, uh, the special meeting on March 2nd, the special meeting on April 6th, and then the regular meeting on April 13th.
Move to approve. Do not?
Schilberg, second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Alright, next, we'll have the financial report for March, please.
This is Schrader with staff. So, at this point in the budget, we should be at seventy-five percent. So, looking, uh, down through on the revenue side, we're sitting very well. There are a few individual ones that are below seventy-five, but there are several well above and overall is well above, uh, seventy-five percent. So, we're looking very good on the revenue side. And on the expense side, um, we're overall right at the seventy-five, so we're right on.
Any discussion or-
Hi, this is Flynn, and I was just wondering about the proceeds of capital asset sales that, um, seems pretty, something big was sold. What was sold, do we know? Or seven-hundred-and-twenty-one percent was, we had budgeted twenty thousand and we got revenue, it looks like.
Yep, yep. This is Schrader with staff. So, that's sale of property. So, as the, um, city gets property by various means, whether that be just a, you know, outright acquisition through negotiation, or property through, uh, the six fifty seven A, um, Iowa code for dilapidated housing process. And then as we sell property, um, we are, yes, well ahead there. We're very good on how many properties we've sold, and there's, um, some additional property sales in the works. So, we expect we're gonna be very good.
So, do, will, like, for the next yearly budget, did they, um, um, increase the adapted budget as far as the potential proceeds, or do they just keep it at twenty thousand, or?
So, each year when they look at the budget, they do look at the previous, um, a couple of years, I think maybe three, and kind of average them out to kind of forecast the budget. So, this will probably mean in future years, our average will be a little higher, and our goal will have to be a little higher.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, if not, do we have a motion to place the financial report on file?
Baldeman, so moved. Throw second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Uh, next item on the agenda are, is the time for oral presentations. Uh, this is if anyone is in the chambers or on the phone that is here to speak on a non-agenda item. So, again, just to clarify, something that's not already on the agenda and you would like a few minutes to speak. Is there first, anyone on the call? Okay, see none. Eric, is there anyone in the chambers?
No, there is not.
Okay, so we'll go on to new business then. The time is four oh seven, and a hearing is scheduled at this time for a request by Saint Martin Land Company on behalf of CPM Acquisition Corp. for a site plan amendment to the M two P Planned Industrial District for the construction of a one, uh, one-hundred-and-forty-thousand square foot manufacturing office warehouse, uh, facility with future additions of thirty-thousand square feet for a total of a hundred-and-seventy-thousand square feet of manufacturing office warehouse facility, plus a storage yard located across from twenty-three twenty-two Levercy Road on pages sixteen through twenty-nine of your packet. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, overview, aerials, and notice map, elevation, and a map site were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one." Do we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
Still moved.
I'll second it.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, see none. Um, first, we will have, uh, the report from staff.
This is Dornoff with staff. The applicant is requesting to construct a hundred-and-forty-thousand square foot manufacturing office and warehouse with future additions of thirty-thousand square feet and a storage yard. The request to construct a new office, manufacturing, and warehouse, and office would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding areas. It would appear to be compatible with other industrial development in the area. The proposed site plan would not appear to have negative impact upon vehicular pedestrian traffic conditions in the area. The site is served by Levercy Road, which is a collector, and served by an extension of East Lake Street, which is a local street. The area of the proposed plot is Zone M two P Planned Industrial District and is zone as such since the adoption of zoning ordinance forty-seventy-seven on March thirteenth, nineteen-ninety-five. Surrounding land uses and their zoning, or as follows, to the north Waterloo Regional Airport and farmland, Zone M two P Planned Industrial District; south Waterloo Regional Airport and farmland, Zone M two P Planned Industrial District; to the east is Waterloo Regional Airport, Zone M two P Planned Industrial District; and to the west residences agricultural and some industrial in the city of Cedar Falls, Zone M one Light Industrial and A one Agricultural District. The future land use map designated this area as an industrial. The applicant is proposing to build a hundred-and-forty-thousand square foot, uh, manufacturing office and warehouse with future additions of thirty-thousand square feet for a total of a hundred-and-seventy-thousand square feet, plus a storage yard. The site plan shows- shows a hundred-and-seventy, um, show, hundred-and-seven parking, hundred-and-seven parking spaces. Warehouses require one space for each two persons regularly employed on the premises, and office space, which is twenty-thousand square feet, will require one parking space for each three-hundred square feet, which translates into sixty-six parking spaces. Five of the parking spaces will require to be handicap spaces. Um, the building will also have four loading docks on the west side of the building, and four loading docks on the south side of the building, and there will be five additional semi-truck parking spaces, which are shown to the north of the building, um, near the west side loading docks. Um, the warehouse exterior will be metal siding with office section composed of horizontal metal panels and precast panels. Uh, the proposed site plan amendment area is designated Zone D within the Blackhawk County Waterloo Airport land use and height overlay area. No impacts- are anticipated regarding the proposed li- line use for the building. Therefore, all conditions are met. During tech review, the fire department noted that the building is over thirty feet. They don't require, need to have aerial access, which is addressed during the building permitting process. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by Saint Martin Land Company on behalf of CPM Acquisition Corporation for a site plan amendment to the M two P Planned Industrial District for construction of a hundred-and-forty-thousand square foot manufacturing office and warehouse with future additions of thirty-thousand square feet for a total of a hundred-and-seventy-thousand square feet of manufacturing office warehouse and a storage yard located across from twenty-three twenty-two Levercy Road be approved for the following reasons. The request is in conformance with comprehensive plan and future land use map for the area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on surrounding area and compatible with surrounding development. The request would provide additional industrial development and jobs in the city with the following conditions: that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, screening, drainage, and et cetera.
Are there initial questions from, from the commissioners? Um, from John?
This is Flynn. I wondered if the house is occupied, and if so, has, um, in good faith, has that, um, owner or resident, um, been spoken to about the project?
Well, all three residences in the area did receive notice, so, but we haven't heard anything from any of them, so.
Okay, and then on page twenty, was this brought previously to the commission? It has a date of March fifth, twenty-nineteen?
Yeah, oh, yeah, um, that was actually the first, um, the, um, there was a truck wash up in there, and so the date didn't get changed, um, which is actually right to the north, right along Lone Tree Road. So, that was-
So, it's incorrect, it just didn't get updated from the previous area?
Exactly. All the other dates are, I think, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, is, um, the applicant or someone on behalf of the applicant, either there in the chambers or on the phone? Or by Zoom?
Yes, by Zoom. Uh, this is a cover call, or calling in, uh, by Zoom, uh, representing Saint Martin Land Company. We're just, uh, very happy and pleased to partner with the city of Waterloo on behalf of CPM to, uh, grow this company, uh, and, uh, continue to, uh, create jobs and, and great products in the city of Waterloo.
Thank you. It, uh, do commissioners have any initial questions for Nick? Okay. Um, is there anyone else on Zoom or by call that is here to speak on this agenda item? Right, um, Eric, is there anyone else in the chambers there to speak on this agenda item?
No, there is not.
Do you want to have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Let's take a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Any opposed? Same time? Okay, uh, public hearing is closed. I'm a motion.
Commissioner Searfling, I'll make the motion that the recommendation, that the request by Saint Martin Land Company on behalf of CPM Acquisition Corporation for a site plan amendment to the M P two P Planned Industrial District for construction of a one-hundred-and-forty-thousand square foot manufacturing office warehouse with future additions of thirty-thousand square feet for a total of one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand square feet of manufacturing office warehouse and a storage yard located across from twenty-three twenty-two Levercy Road be approved for the following reasons: that the request is in conformance with a comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area, nor does it have a negative impact upon the surrounding area and would be compatible with surrounding development. The request would bring additional industrial development and jobs to the city with the following conditions: that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, screening, and drainage.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a request by Envision Architects on behalf of Waterloo Community Schools for a special permit for a sixty-thousand square foot expansion of the Waterloo Career Center in the A one Agricultural District located on the Central Middle School campus at thirteen-fifty, um, Kowalski Drive in pages thirty through forty-five of the packet. We have the staff report, please.
This is Westmore Staff. Um, the zoning ordinance requires that an educational facility obtain a special permit issued by the Board of Adjustment after a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, this is due in part to its ability to develop in many zoning classifications, as well as the impacts such as development can have on other public infrastructure, such as traffic, sewer, et cetera. Uh, Central Middle School recently underwent a minor renovation of six classrooms. However, the balance of the classroom spaces have remained as they are originally constructed in the mid nineteen-seventies. Uh, the facilities committee has been studying options to move forward with remodeling, uh, the existing space for Central Middle School. Um, in efforts to capitalize on the current favorable construction bids, in August twenty-twenty, the board approved the hiring of Envision Architects to plan for the programmatic and facility needs to remodel Central Middle School. Envision has also directed to propose options for the housing of students during the remodel process. Uh, the facilities committee is proposing the construction of a new building on the new, on the Central Middle School site that will temporarily house middle school students during the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year and reopen in August twenty-twenty-three as an expansion to the Waterloo Career Center. Uh, the project has two distinct parts. At Central Middle School, the work is a full gut and remodel of the academic area of the building and the administrative spaces. Other areas of the building will have minor upgrades. Uh, there will be some exterior envelope work that requires glazing, masonry, and roof replacement. The work will include updates to mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and techn- technological systems, as well as fire safety systems in the renovated area. Additional parts of the building will receive only minor general construction updates. The second part of the project represents a sixty-thousand square foot expansion building of the Waterloo Career Center. This addition will include approximately thirty-thousand square feet of high, uh, high bay lab space. The remaining area will house general use, classrooms, and lab classrooms. A portion of the classrooms will cons- be constructed as a stone shelter. The shell of the building, uh, will be constructed as a precast concrete and steel. The work will be included, uh, will include general, general construction, mechanical site, uh, development, electrical, plumbing, and fire and safety work. Uh, the new building will be connected to the existing school by a skybridge. Both parts of the project will expand the geothermal system previously implemented on the site. At the May fourth, two thousand and twenty-one Technical Review Committee meeting, the fire department stated that the applicant has been asked to design a new fire lane, uh, to be the entire length of the addition, uh, be the minimum of fifteen feet wide by thirty feet, fifteen to thirty feet wide, and built to withstand a minimum of seventy-five thousand pounds. Uh, Westmore stated that there was one call from a neighbor who is in favor of the project, but wants to ensure that any new lighting added to, uh, the project not shine onto their property, and wants to keep the existing tree line as a buffer. Uh, therefore, staff recommends that the request by Envision Architects on behalf of Waterloo Community Schools for a special permit for a sixty-thousand square foot expansion of the Waterloo Career Center in a A one Agricultural District on the Central Middle School campus at thirteen-fifty-one, thirteen-fifty Kowalski Drive be approved for the following reasons: the request would not appear to have a nega- negative impact on the surrounding area and would appear to be compatible to the surrounding area. Secondly, the request is in conformance with the com- comprehensive plan and future land use map, and subject to the final site plan meets the applicable codes- the regulation, et cetera, including but not limited to the parking, landscaping, stonewall detention, et cetera.
Please, um, commissioners, are there initial questions?
Yes, uh, this is Do Not. I had a question about the letter on page forty-two in the packet. So, Ms. Lewis talked about her concerns throughout this letter, and I was just wondering if those concerns had been addressed, addressed, sorry.
This is Schrader with staff. They have not been addressed yet that we are aware of. Um, so, the, um, applicant is, I believe, on the Zoom call, and perhaps they are planning to address them.
Okay. This is Charles. Question, um, there, the technical review, uh, fire department-wise required a driveway. Do these plans on page thirty reflect that drive yet, or is that an alternative plan that has to be provided yet?
Do you want me to answer those questions?
I believe that, uh, the fire lane, uh, needs to be submitted, the site plan for that.
Uh, we do have, um, Ms. Payne from Envision on the Zoom call. Um, at this point, we can have her answer some of the questions and introduce herself. Go ahead, Ms. Payne.
Okay, thank you. Um, my name is Kate Payne. I'm with Envision Architecture, and I responded to the questions in that letter, um, about an hour ago to, I sent it to him. I can address them specifically right now if you'd like, but let me jump to the fire lane for a minute. We met with both Greg Allhelm and, um, Brock with the fire department, and, uh, we worked through those details. The bid documents that are pub, that were bid on this project do include adequate accommodation for the fire truck as requested by the fire department. So, that has been included and submitted to the city for, um, permitting. So, that has been submitted to the, to the permitting people, um, and to the fire department. Um, if I need to submit it again to you guys, I just need to tell me. Um, that being said, the questions in the letter, let me open that up, and I will tell you what it all says. So, the first question, um, is about lighting on the site, and I can tell you that the new lighting will be LED and that it will, they'll be on by photocell and turned off by a scheduled, um, sequence that the school district sets up. And when I discussed this with the school district earlier today, he told me that the parking lights go off if there are no events. So, if there is an event at the school, the lights will be on, but if the, there are no events, the lights would go off. There are some safety lights at the doors and exits to the building, but those don't seem to be the concern of the neighbor. It's the parking lot lights. Um, additionally, the tree line on the west, this project doesn't touch those trees. It doesn't, um, it shouldn't affect those trees, and I know that the request from planning and zoning or the city included that a buffer be provided between this building and the neighbors to the west. The existing tree lines are being touched, so I don't know if additional work is required. It's not my understanding that it would be. However, um, we're not touching those trees. They're not getting demolished or hurt in any way during this construction. The next question has to do with entrances on and off of the site. We're not changing the way cars come and go from the site. The two entrances, the one in Kowalski and the one in Huntington, will remain in use. No additional sites, access points will be added to the project. So, people will not be going through the neighborhood to the west to get into the property. Um, security cameras will be provided, uh, around the building. That was another question. And, um, I think that the question, though, is really being driven by when, if there are, um, I guess, uh, people using the parking lot in ways that it wasn't intended, uh, so that will be cammed, uh, and recorded, but I think that, uh, that might not be fast enough for certain kinds of conditions. So, I would encourage people to call the police if they thinks if there's something going on there that, um, needs to be dealt with faster than a security camera might be able to. Um, the next question was how far back will the west edge of the property be from the new construction, and it will, the closest it will be is two-hundred-and-forty feet from a property line.
Wow.
Um, because of the weird angles of the building and the property line, and then the school district additional property of, that is, was Miriam's Park, uh, it just gets, the number just gets larger. So, the closest the property line will be is two-hundred-and-forty feet. Then there was another question about the sewer line, uh, the, the new- Then there was another question about the sewer line, uh, the, the new sewer lines to the building, uh, the new construction will connect to the existing sanitary lines, um, that serve the building. So there will be no work going to the west of the neighborhood, which I think is the concern of the letter writer. Um, and then storm water was the last question in that list, and, um, there are a few things planned to manage storm water on the site. There will be a detention pond on the north side of the building that will take the runoff, um, kind of, basically on the north side of the building. There will be additional detention on the south side of the building that will collect the water from the added paving area. There will also, there is an existing stormwater detention area on the site that's kind of nestled between the two parking lots on the west, and that will be enlarged to accommodate any additional runoff and pretty much cleaned up because I think it's kind of filled up with plant life and stuff. And then additionally, we're adding, we're taking some per- impervious surface away. So the project includes removing some of the, what was the old driver's ed site. So we're removing impervious pavement there and also creating a bit of a detention area to the west of that to slow down any water that moves in that direction. So the assumption here is that there will be no impact on the storm water that runs between the neighborhood and the site. It will all be detained on site and trickled out to that, that waterway that exists between the school and the neighborhood to the west. I think that answers all the questions in the letter. Are there other questions that you want to put out there for me?
Commissioner Searfling, I have a question. Is the fire lane going to be the 30 feet allowed in the back or the 15? It seemed, um, to be safer to be the 30-foot fire lane.
So it's driven by the, it's, it's driven by the fire truck itself and the aerial truck. So on, in the space between the new building and the existing building, that is being designed to be wide enough for the aerial truck to both get under the sidewalk and to park anywhere along that lane. Um, there is a fire hydrant there to, uh, that serves that part of the building as well. So the fire truck can be on the, in the space between the existing building and the new building. Additionally, there's a fairly large paved area on the south side of the building, which will be designed to accommodate the weight of the fire truck, and it's, it, it accommodates, I mean, we worked specifically with Brock and with Greg to make sure that we got this to meet their expectations. So, um, a designated portion of that paving area to the south will be designated as a fire lane. The size is really about the fire truck being able to put out the leveling legs, you know, so that when the aerial's up, it doesn't wobble.
Are there other questions for Ms. Payne?
Yes, there is. Um, the, the storm water runoff on the, the west side that you're talking about between the neighborhood and the back of the central, back of the school.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if you're not aware of it, the, the culvert system that's there in place right now is falling apart a little bit, and it's being underwashed right now. So if we add more water to that.
Caller, we need you to identify your name and address for the record first, okay?
I'm, I'm sorry, okay. Sean Elsburn, 1237 Edgewood Drive, Waterloo. Um, that's one of the concerns is the, the system that it's there now, if we get a hard rain, that it actually comes up anywhere from 12 to 20 feet into the backyards that are existing there. If it's, um, perfect conditions, uh, that, that's not all the time, but if you get a hard, hard rain, um, there is a lot of water runoff. And right now, there's some existing problems with the system that's there in place now. So if you add a lot more water to it, there's going to be some, some problems in the future.
And, and I guess I have a question on, you used the word trickle. Uh, how can you get the water to trickle when it's a heavy rain? I mean.
So what, the, the way the design works for the site where the school is growing is that all of the water that happens in a heavy rain on an impervious surface, so the roof of the building or the concrete, is collected in detention ponds of, you know, they're located, there'll be now four of them on that side of the building, that the water is collected in those areas, and those, the size of those is based on the, um, predicted sting, kinds of expected rainwater events. So that the water would be collected in those detention ponds until, and then it allows the water to move into the, um, neighborhood waterway as appropriate, right? So that we're not adding additional runoff directly into it. It's trickled, for lack of a better word. It's held on site and then allowed to get there sooner or later.
Okay. Um, what about the?
I don't, I don't think that we're adding, um, we're detaining the water on site. We're not allowing it to get into that waterway, um, in, in any notable capacity during a rain event.
Okay. As, as of right now, um, they're about two feet away from actually exposing a manhole, um, in that waterway now. It's, it's undercut the bank and everything and taking that out now further down. And where it actually comes out of the culvert, um, where all the water runs off from Central, it has undercut it quite a, quite a, quite a bit.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, as time goes by, it's going to be a continuing problem, and if you continue with the way it is now and add more water to it, even in a trickle, you're going to have, um, more cutoff, and that, that manhole will sooner or later be exposed.
Is it, uh, is what you're describing on the school district property, or is it, is it an area way or some sort of right of way that's a?
Well, it's, it's either in the school district property or it's on Bartholomew owns that property. I'm not sure which.
That's what we're told. It is, it's the water, existing water runoff on the backside of the school is, is what it is.
Are you talking towards Marion Park area, like that runoff?
Yeah, it, no. No. I don't know, we don't know what runs into it, all of it. Um, and we know that it's.
It's, it's a ways from Marion Park. I mean, because we're talking behind Edge, or behind Edgewood Drive.
Basically, if you where the existing ball, ball diamond is there in the park, Marion Park, just to the south of that is the, uh, the, the culvert I'm talking about. It's probably about, it's probably a six or eight foot, uh, round culvert.
But the manhole that he's talking about is right behind our house.
Yeah, it's, uh, that's probably about 25, 20 feet away from the culvert.
Well, that's right, well, yeah.
It's the third one down.
To the south.
Yeah, it's on the, the west side of the parking lot.
It's basically, we, we're not aware of who actually owns that or what the.
We don't know where the property line starts and ends with Bartholomew.
It was a Eastman at one time, but then the city of Waterloo put it for sale.
Um, I, we can look into it further. I, I don't know that I can.
Yes.
I mean, I can, I can tell you that the design was intended to keep the water on site for as long as appropriate, so that we weren't putting a large surge of water into the other waterway, but, you know, the one that's collecting it all.
Yeah, that's what.
This is Jamie Knudsen, city engineer, listening to this. If you're talking directly behind your home and the drainage way behind your home, that is all owned by a Sherry Bartholomew.
Yes. Okay, then that is.
They are the persons responsible for maintenance of that drainage way, um, not the city or the school.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
There is, there is anywhere, depending upon where you're at in that drainage way, but there's, there's anywhere from 50 to 100 feet, um, between the back lot line and the school property line that is owned by this, um, Sherry Bartholomew.
Yeah, um, we're, we are aware of, of that, but we wanted everybody to take into consideration the fact that as time goes, that it's going to cause somebody some problems the way, the way it's set up now. And if she would look into just what it looks like to see what they think, or the city of Waterloo look at that, I, I don't know.
I can tell you that we reviewed the drainage plan as submitted, um, to us, and it meets all the requirements that, that we have as far as the detention. And probably the easiest way to explain all of this, um, the same amount of water that is going to, you're going to see the same amount of water coming off of this site now as what they're doing after the building is complete. These basins where all this water runs into, think of it as like a bathtub. All of that water's going to come in there and it's going to sit, and then it's going to get let out slowly to that drainage way. So you're still going to see the same volume of water over that time. It's just going to be at a much lower flow rate. It's just going to come at you a lot slower. So it's going to take longer for the water to drain out. That's the idea that it's behind all of the detention basins is to make sure that rather than just basically opening the drain and a big flush gets, comes into that drainage way.
Yes.
Holding it and letting it out slowly. It's still the same amount of water, it's just let out at a gentler rate to help minimize, um, damage downstream to whether it's a drainage way or, or pipes or things like that.
This is Schrader with the Planning and Department, Planning and Zoning Department staff, and we can get with the engineering department staff and, and take a, a look at some of the issues you're addressing, but it sounds like that, uh, those issues might be on the Bartholomew property. And if that's the case, they, that individual would have the maintenance responsibility. The schools would have no jurisdiction or no authority to make any changes or improvements to their property.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Commissioner, this is Commissioner Trost. Um, just a real quick question. Um, so from what I understand is, is that as designed right now, this proposed, uh, change to the site with the building, um, the flow of stormwater off the site is no different than what it is currently after the building is complete, based on the design that was submitted to you. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And so, uh, this is Do Not with my question. On page 31, it describes at the bottom, it says the Facilities Committee is proposing construction of a new building. And so that paragraph at the bottom of page 31, um, how does the construction with the new building and the temporary school work? Um, is that a temporary building while they're, while they are making renovations to the original building? Or what's going on there with?
This is Flynn. I, Kate, good job. Um, and I, um, that building will be the permanent structure.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not, and I think there, that was kind of confusing because it's the Waterloo Schools Facilities Committee is what they're referring to there.
Oh, yeah, I understood it was from the school district.
Okay.
So.
This is Schrader with staff. So they will build the new building, which its long-term purpose will primarily be for the Career Center, but its immediate purpose, once it's done being built, will be to house students that get moved out of the main school building. Then the renovation of the main school building will occur. Once that finished, the kids will move back in there, and then it'll be primarily used as the Career Center.
Okay.
It will, it will transition to the Career Center high bays and the programs that we're adding that will need those types of facilities. Each, every two falls, we add new programs to the Career Center.
So the building size of the building, your building needs to be the size of a middle school?
It's not the entire middle school.
No, it's just the backside. And what, what this plan, the intent was, is so that we did not have to disrupt kids, um, from leaving their building. So this will house them to go into this space so they do not have to leave Central Middle School while we're renovating the central existing middle school. They'll just be housed, their classrooms, they'll set up, um, temporary portable rooms in that building, and when the middle school is all remodeled, the kids will transition back to the full middle school, and then those building, that building will be used for the Career Center new rooms.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, are there, um, other folks in the chamber who are there to speak on this agenda item?
No, there are not.
Okay. Are there other, on the call or by Zoom, who are here to speak on this agenda item?
I, I do have one more question, um, as far as.
Can you please identify yourself? I'm sorry, I don't think we got your name.
Karen Elsburn, 1237 Edgewood Drive. Um, as far as like the, the fence line behind Central, we were wondering if maybe they could put up a fence, a private, some kind of a privacy fence to, uh, ensure more of a barrier to the neighborhood for, between fast and different things like that, especially with the parking lot and the school and stuff being right there.
I think that probably, Kate, would you agree it might need, if you had that concern, you could, um, come to a school board meeting. We meet, um, every other Monday at five o'clock at the, um, administration building on Washington Street, and, um, we could have our, um, Marty Metcalf on our department look at that. Um, if you look at schools around the community, like a West High School, you know, it's almost impossible to fence around an entire school building, it, you know, but I'm not saying that they would not look at that area and look to see. That's very, um, high use with the Memorial Stadium there, um, and so there are a lot of, um, people in and out of there. So I would suggest that, um, or you could call the superintendent's office and speak with Dr. Lindeman.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anyone else on Zoom or by, by phone who's, um, here to speak on this agenda item? Okay. The same, is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, thank you.
Um, Virginia, this is, uh, Flynn, and I will abstain from voting on this issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Why not?
Um, is there someone who would like to make a motion?
This is Trost. I'll make a motion, um, that the request by Envision Architects on behalf of Waterloo Community Schools for a special permit for 60,000 square foot expansion of the Waterloo Career Center in the A1 Agricultural District located on the Central Middle School Campus at 1350 Katuski Drive be approved and subject to the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, stormwater, detention, et cetera.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And one abstention.
Motion carried. Oh, yes, and one abstention. Motion carried. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is a request by the City of Waterloo to vacate a right-of-way located at East High School at 214 High Street, pages 46 through 51. We have that.
Yes, this is, uh, Hybrider with the staff report. Uh, the applicant is the City of Waterloo. Uh, the applicant's request to vacate portions of a formerly platted road near 214 High Street, uh, request to vacate a city-owned right-of-way, will enable the city to correct the legal description for land vacated in the 1970s, and a vacant piece of city-owned right-of-way that should have already been vacated years ago at East High School, uh, because it is no longer needed for city purposes. Uh, the request to vacate not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular traffic in the area. Um, the site's been zoned R3 multiple residence districts since the adoption of the zoning warrants in 1969, uh, to the North Canadian National Rail Yard, uh, Moonlight Industrial District, to the south is East High School, R3 multiple residence. the south is East High School, R-three multiple residence district to the east, the Canadian National Rail Road Yard and Moonlight Industrial District in the west, downtown Waterloo, C-two Commercial District and C-three Central Business District. Uh, request will not require buffering. Uh, closed vacate will not impact drainage. Uh, it's uh located on the northwestern edge of East High School Campus. The areas to be vacated are currently utilized as a baseball field. Um, and uh these vacate areas are not located in a special flood hazard area. Um, vacate uh does not contain any utilities. It is currently a baseball diamond for East High. Uh, future land use map design needs to spaces, parks, open space, schools, hospitals, government facility and public areas. Uh, this vacate will be in compliance with such designation. Uh, the request to vacate city-owned right-of-way would not appear to negatively affect the uh area or traffic conditions. The two vacate areas currently contain a baseball diamond on East High School's campus. Uh, one of the vacate areas was vacated in March twenty-second nineteen seventy-one, but as stated earlier, the, there was an incorrect legal description. That legal description will be revised as part of this vacate request. Uh, the other area was a strip of right-of-way between High Street and Fremont Street that was never vacated, even though the street, um, the streets, it, the next two were vacated. Uh, there would be no plating required in relation to this request. Uh, the city will complete a plat of survey to view the property, uh, describe the area to be vacated and eliminate the line. Therefore, staff recommends the request by the City of Waterloo to vacate uh point one nine acres of city-owned right-of-way at East High School at two one four High Street and is located in the R-three multiple residence district be approved for the following reasons. Request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. Request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular pedestrian or traffic conditions. Request to vacate would not uh allow, would allow for the revision of an incorrect legal description for one of the vacant areas, uh, vacate areas and vacate an area of city right-of-way that is no longer needed for city purposes. And that's the staff report.
This is Flynn. Who currently mows and maintains that?
This is Schrader with staff. The one in the middle of the ball field, I'm sure the school does.
School does, yeah.
Okay.
The, the other one is kind of over closer to the rail, road yard, and it, you, you probably maintain a portion of it, but it might be kind of getting into the area that um is a little bit of a no man's land, but.
Just wondered about weed buildup or something on that one.
Any other questions for staff? Anyone on the call or by Zoom here to speak on this agenda item? Doesn't look like it. Um, anyone there, um, Eric, to speak on this agenda item?
No, there is not.
Okay. We have a motion.
Uh, this is Lystico. Uh, I motion that we approve the request by the City of Waterloo to vacate point one nine acres of city-owned right-of-way at East High School at two fourteen High Street and is located in the R-three multiple residence district uh for the following reasons. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular, vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions in the area. The request to vacate would not allow for revision of incorrect legal description for one of the vacate areas and vacate an area of city right-of-way that is no longer needed for the city purposes.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Next item on the agenda um is a request that Hawkeye Community College for an encroachment agreement to install fencing in bollards on city-owned right-of-way located along West First Street in the C-three Central Business District located at one twenty Jefferson Street, pages fifty-two through fifty-nine. The back of the.
Okay, yeah, um Hawkeye Community College or one twenty Jefferson Street is the applicant. The applicant's proposing to install fencing and twenty-one bollards that will, that are both uh forty-two inches in height on city-owned property along West First Street. The majority of the fencing and the bollards will be constructed on Hawkeye uh Community College-owned property. There's approximately fifty feet of fence that will encroach less than one foot into the city right-of-way, and the twenty-one bollards will encroach less than four feet into the city right-of-way. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. Uh, the request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic or pedestrian conditions in the area, as the fence and bollards are only forty-two inches in height and would not impede visibility of traffic along West First Street. Uh, there are sidewalks located along West First Street, Jefferson Street and Highway sixty-three. Um, the property in question, uh, Zone C-three Commercial District and has been zoned as such, and uh was rezoned from M-one Light Industrial District on July twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen with the passage of ordinance five-three-five-nine. A special permit was also approved by the Board of Adjustment on July twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen for the property to have a multipurpose educational facility. Um, the request would not appear to have, but would appear to have uh an impact on drainage in the area. The proposed encroachment area is designated as Zone X protected by levy and is not located in any special flood hazard area. Uh, nearest public space is eight hundred and fifty feet to the southwest, and that'd be the Waterloo River Loop Expo Plaza area. Uh, no utilities uh are known to exist with the, the proposed encroachment area. However, there's a twelve-inch sanitary sewer made, ten inch water main, a fiber line for traffic control system in close proximity to the proposed encroachment area, and a twelve-foot uh storm sewer underneath West First Street. In addition, there is a thirty-six-inch storm sewer, uh, twelve-inch water main and twenty-four sanitary sewer underneath Jefferson Street, but uh there, there's no utilities that will be impacted in the encroachment area. The property is located in an area that are, is shown on the future land use map as commercial. Uh, the proposed encroachment area is located within primary growth areas identified in the comprehensive plan. Uh, the fencing bollards uh will be placed approximately fourteen feet from the southeast edge of West First Street, allowing for ample sight visibility for those traveling along West First Street. The concrete bollards and silver uh welded wire mesh fence will both be about forty-two uh inches in height. The bollards will be designed to demobilize a vehicle before it can hit the building. Uh, there've been three vehicular accidents involving the east side of the building since the building opened in two thousand nineteen. Uh, slippery road conditions for traffic exiting the Highway two eighteen off-ramp have been an issue with many of the accidents. Uh, no plating with this, uh, is required for this request. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by Hawkeye Community College for an encroachment agreement to install uh forty-two inch high uh fencing and bollards into city right-of-way at one twenty Jefferson Street. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the traffic conditions in the area. Uh, the forty-two inch uh high fencing and bollards will protect the east side of the building and subject to a signed and executed encroachment agreement that enables the City Waterloo to terminate the agreement and right to remove the uh forty-two inch bollards and fence in the event the area is ever needed for any utility purposes. And uh that is Hiberger with the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for?
Do we know what those are made of? Bullet?
Oh, I guess, yes.
Larry Weider with ACOM. They're uh steel bollards that are embedded in, in the concrete footings to stop the vehicles.
And how far apart are they?
They're approximately four and a half feet apart.
Wow.
Um, and uh, ju- just a little background on it, if, if you aren't aware, like, like Seth said, there's been three instances over the past six months where the vehicle has been hit. And uh, the most serious one was the first one. It caused about a quarter million dollars of damage to their building. Um, then about two months later, there was an episode overnight where the, the freezing, the melting and freezing overnight caused a situation where they had uh multiple vehicles up onto that area. I don't believe any of them actually struck the building, but they were very close. And then just uh two and a half weeks ago, um, another vehicle um was out of control and uh caused more damage to the building um in a new area of that building. Um, this is the area within the building that houses their daycare facility. So obviously, they are quite concerned about that, and they're um interested in getting that taken care of um as quickly as possible. And if you, if you've noticed, they've actually, we've put some temporary barrier rails to protect the building in the meantime while we wait to get the permanent structures installed.
I think this might be more for staff, but legally then, if somebody hits that, who, you know, I'm not an insurance expert by any means, but liability-wise, who would be liable um for that?
This is Schrader with staff. The encroachment agreement would have um liability wording providing for the school to be liable and to indemnify the City of Waterloo.
School would retain.
The liability.
Okay, perfect.
Uh, this is Virginia. I don't see anyone else on the phone or by Zoom. Eric, is there anyone else there in the chambers that is here to speak on this agenda item?
There is no one else in the chambers.
Are they going to be painted blue and orange for Hawkeye, or do we know?
Uh, I, we're actually looking at using a, a silver color to match the, the um siding of the building.
Okay, perfect. I just know the shutter's on the one side of the blue and orange.
I, I think we're trying to go low-key with these bollards and not draw any more attention to them than we need to.
Right, okay, thank you.
Eric, do I need to excuse myself from voting at all? We're doing work on the project for Cardinal Construction.
Um, this is Schrader with staff. I would say it's probably good enough. Out of caution, we better.
I think it's a good thing because um.
Needed.
We need to protect that area and those kids, and it's a good idea.
Any other questions? Or do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Trost. Um, to recommend approve the request by Hawkeye Community College for an encroachment agreement to install forty-two inch high fencing and bollards into the city right-of-way at one twenty Jefferson Street, subject to a signed and executed encroachment agreement that enables the City of Waterloo to terminate the agreement and right to remove forty, the forty-two inch bollards and fence in the event that the area is needed for street or utility purposes, and that the encroachment agreement places liability for the materials and the installation on Hawkeye Community College.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, uh, any discretion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, uh, one.
And then one abstention.
One exempt.
Yep. And motion carried. Okay, next item on the agenda is a request by the City of Waterloo for the final plat of Waterloo Air and Rail Park Second Edition, a five-lot industrial subdivision located across twenty-three, twenty-two Liberty Road, pages sixty through seventy on the package. We have the staff report, please.
This is our office staff. Some of the stuff's duplicate from the site plan amendment first item, so I won't repeat that. Um, basically what, the applicant's requesting a final plat of Waterloo Air and Rail Park Second Edition. The plat includes five lots. Originally, the plat was to, to include four lots. However, the northern ten acres of what was planned to be Lot Four is split a lot, split off as Lot Five. Lot One is five point seven acres. Lot Two is four point three nine acres. Lot Three is four point three nine acres. Lot Four is twenty-one point five three acres, and Lot Five is ten acres. Track A represents the exact extension of East Street, which will, is one point three six acres, but probably will not be called East Lake Street. The first name we came up with, the engineering department rejected it, so we have to try again. Um, so the street name will be determined before. Um, all buildings to, um, developed will need to meet the requirements of the Waterloo um regional airport overlay zoning, which limits the heights of buildings. Um, during tech review, Knutson, city engineer noted the detention for the entire plant, um, plat um is a work in progress, and there's supposed to be one detention basin for the entire plat. Um, an additional track may be needed to added to cover this. There'll um also need to be um ten-foot easements added on each side of the um unnamed street um before, and all this will need to be submitted to us before um we send it to city council. Um, then it does include the legal description, property line dimensions, date, easements right-of-way, property, proper property lines, lot sequence and adjoining subdivisions, um building setback lines are set during the site plan review process. Um, engineer certificate of survey, dedic, dedication and uplay, dated plat will need to be submitted before forwarding the item to the city council. Therefore, staff recommends that the final plat for um Waterloo Air Rail Park Second Edition be approved for the following reasons. The plat should not have a negative impact on surrounding area. The plat should not have a negative um impact on traffic conditions in the area. Plat will create additional infill development site in the primary growth area with the following conditions, that the plat is updated and additional documents submitted as required by staff before a request is sent to city council.
Any questions for John? Uh, there is no one else on the, on Zoom or by phone? Um, anyone else there, Eric?
No.
Any further discussion or uh is there a motion?
Uh, this is Lystico. I got a question or maybe uh as far as with the following conditions, would we want to make sure that we just get that drainage plan in there?
This is Schrader. Sure, that would be fine.
Okay. Uh, with that, then I'll go ahead and I, I will make the mesh, the motion to approve the final plat for Waterloo Air and Rail Park Second Edition um with the following conditions, that the plat is updated and additional documents are submitted as required by staff before the request is sent to city council, along with having a drainage plan included.
Second.
Any discretion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Um, request by the Veterans Memorial Hall Commission to rename Cedar Street from West Fourth Street to West Fifth Street to Corbett Court on pages, this is on pages seventy through eighty of the package. We have the staff report, please.
The applicant's requesting to rename a portion of Cedar Street from Corb, to, from Cedar Street to Corbett Court. Um, the, it is, the property in question is Zone C-three Central Business District and sp, zone is since the adoption of zoning ordinance. Um, there is twelve-inch and thirty-six-inch sanitary sewer lines located in portions of Cedar Street. There's also storm sewer in a portion of Cedar Street near West Fifth Street. Um, the applicant's requesting to rename one block of a little loose, little u, used section of Cedar Street from West Fourth Street to West Fifth Street to Corbett Court. Their quest is to remember an original member of the Veterans Memorial Hall Commission who had served in World War Two in the Army Medical Corps. The only bu, um, building addressed on this section is the Veterans Memorial Hall. Therefore, staff recommends of um naming the street be approved for the following reason. The engineering department has reviewed the request and concurs with the naming, renaming of Cedar Street to Corbett Court, as it does not conflict with any other street names and recommends approval.
Any question? You have a motion?
Commissioner, sir, Flynn. I'll make, I'll make the motion that um we accept the request by the Waterloo Veterans Memorial Hall Commission to rename Cedar Street from West Fourth Street to West Fifth Street to Corbett Court. And for the following reason, that the engineering department has reviewed the request and concurs with the renaming Cedar Street to Corbett Court, as it does not conflict with any other street names and recommends approval.
Second, Trost.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Are there any other discussion items this afternoon? Okay, um.
We do have just one.
We do have just one, Virginia.
Oh, what?
We just, we are losing one commissioner after this meeting, so we get to say goodbye to Sylvia. She's, first time seeing her in person, and now we're losing her.
Hope you have a good read.
Thanks for serving.
I'm going back to DC.
Are you really? Wow. Say hello to Marcia.
I will, I will. And I wanted to thank everyone. I know this has been a difficult, challenging time, but you've made me feel so comfortable and so welcome, and I appreciate everybody's help, and, and I, and I will miss you. I've enjoyed this a lot.
Thanks. We appreciate you being on. Thank you, Sylvia.
Thank you. And cupcakes are coming.
Yeah, thank you.
And this is Schrader with staff. I would just note at the last special meeting discussing the comprehensive plan update, it was indicated that we would go on a break from having those special meetings. Interco, Iowa Northern Regional Council of Governments is now going to step back and try and compile all of the information they've received and start working on some initial draft works of the plan before they would come back. So, we'll have a little repeat. So, our next meeting, regular meeting, would be June eighth.
June what?
June eighth.
And thank you to all the commissioners for your extra time on that, and Interco as well, and staff as well, and Sylvia, thank you as well for all your service.
And do you know Sylvia?
I, I could leave there next month, so...
Go ahead. Sylvia, you can't leave to go back to DC until you find your replacement. That's the rule here.
I said you had to bring my...
That's how you got here from Marcia.
You had to bring my cupcakes, too, with the replacement.
Well, I know, but we couldn't bring cupcakes because you can't eat, so... I made, I made a deal with Eric that I'll send Georgetown cupcakes in a couple of months. And I'll go find a replacement today. I'll see what I can do.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move, Tros. Second, Joe.
All right, all those in favor.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you, everyone.